I'd like to call them April fifth, two thousand twenty-two Wyndham Select Board meeting to order at six thirty P M. This is a virtual meeting via Zoom and is being recorded. All the votes that we take tonight will be taken by roll call and we'll take a roll call attendance, starting with Diane.
Diane Booko here.
Gary Cheeseman here.
Catherine Harrison here. So we have our board. We have our recording secretary. We have our interim T A. I think we're ready to start. So the first thing on our agenda, as always, is public input for items that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone who's watching or listening, who would like to make a comment about or ask a question about something that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do that. And we will follow up if it's a question that we're unable to answer. Okay, I do not see anyone in the chat. Let me just make this all so I can see folks. I do not see anyone who has a question this. Tom or Michelle, do you see anyone? Okay, we're gonna move on then. Okay, um, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are announcements. We have a couple of them. And Tom, if you would take care of those announcements for us, I'd appreciate it.
Actually, our town clerk, Trudy Reed is online. Don't know if she would like to do them.
Trudy, would you like to do the announcements?
Sure, I came on just to make sure we got it right tonight, so.
Oh, well, there you go. So if it's wrong, we can only blame you, Trudy. The town clerk.
Is there a slide?
There should be one up for the annual town election.
Oh, I'm sorry. There it is. I'm sorry. Okay, so yes, the annual town election coming up in two days. Woo-hoo. Here at Town Hall, seven A M. to eight P M. Absentee voting is still available up until noon time on Wednesday. So there are the reasons. If you're not in Town Hall during voting hours, medical reason or religious reasons. So noon time, Wednesday, it's the last chance to absentee vote.
Any questions about election day or voting?
Perhaps Trudy could go through. Are we using the one-way traffic again? In one door and out the other?
Hadn't thought about it. I mean, I hadn't really thought about it. Gary? I guess it's whatever door somebody's comfortable walking out of since there's no mask requirements and although the signs are still on the floor, so people may just naturally do that. Yeah, I guess it depends on how busy it is. There's a lot of people standing in line waiting to check in. We'll just ask them to go out the front door and circle the building. We'll play it by you.
Very well.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda, which we may or may not have a slide for tonight, it wasn't in my packet, but our reports. So if you can go back, please, to just to the announcements, and we'll just sit there for a minute while we're doing the reports. First, we have town administrators update. Tom, can you share an update for us, please?
Okay. First, and I actually noticed this today, is at our library on Saturday, April ninth, and Saturday between nine and three, we have the Friends of the Library Spring Book Sale at the large meeting room in the library. I would welcome all my residents to go down there. There's no such thing as an old book, just a book that you haven't read yet. And help our library out. Libraries make communities very livable. And any support that you could give them would be very much appreciated. Next, we have a couple of public works items. One is from Senator Congressman Moulton's office. We were able to forward to our D P W Director's Office an online program where they could apply for funding opportunities on various aspects from the federal government. And I know Mr. Susa will be utilizing that in trying to bring additional funds from public works projects into our community. Speaking of public works funding, we've been mentioning it over the past few weeks about the supplemental budget, state supplemental budget and additional one-time road funds in there, approximately about a hundred million dollars for cities and towns. The governor signed the supplemental budget yesterday, which would mean for us, based on if my estimate is correct, a one-time additional seventy-five thousand dollars in roadwork that Mr. Suser can utilize for almost any purpose going forward. So once the state gives us the instructions of how to receive those funds, there'll be additional seventy-five, should be additional seventy-five thousand, one way or the other, for roadway purposes in the, for the town. Next, some updates. I know we have an item in there for updates for town meeting, but I just want to bring you update of things that happened since Saturday for things that were recently approved. One thing which I never had the opportunity to thank, I thanked, you know, all the various boards, committees and our team here, but I do want to thank the residents of the town for showing up on Saturday. It was a really nice day to have our residents showing up and participating in democracy is a great thing to see. So for all of you who showed up on Saturday, thank you very much. I've done two town meetings in Wyndham since I've come here. That's two more than I originally expected. And it's been very enjoyable, well-run, and I appreciate the discussion from our residents for the voting and everybody from our team and our elected and appointed officials for putting together a very well-run meeting. But now going back to things that have happened since then. One is on the three to five article. The intention is, is once our town clerk approves and certifies the minutes, we will be filing that legislation with our local representatives to begin the process. Just to give you a little history on the past two legislative sessions of the State House, there have been at least two bills that have been filed and approved to move from a three to five. The current one in our current legislative sessions from the town of Fairhaven, they had filed it on July fourteenth of last year, and it was signed into law on November first of last year. Also, two years ago, the town of Duxbury also filed a three to five legislation, and that was filed on June tenth of nineteen and approved on October twenty-first of nineteen. More than likely, when we file our legislation, it will go before a hearing at the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. More than likely, I probably, you probably have your new town administrator on board then. But as of now, those are virtual hearings, so if we are testifying, it would be virtually. One benefit to us is Senator Tower is on that committee. And if we can get the legislation through committee and out to the legislative floors, that would be certainly appreciated. Also from a town meeting, I have worked with our team, our various teams, public works, fire, police, public works. Because now that the F Y twenty-three capital budget was filed, I had asked them to begin all the procurement processes, all the paperwork to get these items rolling. So we can in July, once the funds are in our appropriate accounts, that we can complete this project and have these capital items available to us in the summer versus starting the process in July and then continuing out to September and October. So I appreciate our department heads working on that and getting that out to the various vendors that they'll need to have. Last thing, based on Saturday's meeting, have I started the review with our finance department of a three-quarter budget for F Y twenty-one? See how our expenditures and our revenues are going forth, and I hope to report back to the board on that probably within our next meeting. Other updates on items that we're working on right now is probably by your next meeting, we will have the contract for your approval for the master plan. We have three proposals. The planning board had made a recommendation. So we're completing the paperwork on that, and then we will have the contracts before the board, select board probably for your next meeting. Also, hopefully for your next meeting, we have three lease extensions for I N rail, which I've drafted, and we will be in my office tomorrow to review, and then we will submit them to Town Council for final review. And hopefully they will be ready for your next select boards meeting because these three leases expire on June thirtieth. But I'd rather have these done sooner than later and looking forward to getting them to the board. And the last two items are, and I want to thank our fire department, specifically Chief Kavanaugh, Deputy Baxter, for having us being awarded a almost seventeen hundred dollar grant award for an automated defibrillator, a new updated one. Deputy Baxter is going to work with Town Hall and work with having some individuals certified so that they're able to use the defib. I used to be certified. Unfortunately, I let it not be renewed, but we will have people in Town Hall who will be knowing how to utilize that in the near future. And last, we have going before the board in the near future, a request for the annual Coast to the Cure bicycling race. And our department heads have reviewed it and everyone is fine with it. The race takes place on September tenth, so we have time. It starts and finishes at Stageford Park in Gloucester, and basically it goes parts of Grapevine Road and Latch Road. So that will be before the board in the near future also. So thank you very much, board members, and thank you to people who are on television, watching us and in the Zoom chat.
Okay, actually, my, my comment tonight actually is to echo a lot of things that Tom said relative to appreciation for all the folks that worked very hard to put together a really successful town meeting. I wouldn't even begin to name everyone, but some folks were new to our town meeting. Some folks have been around for a little while and it, I thought it was a very welcoming, well-run, well-organized town meeting, and it was great to see people there and the conversations were good, and it just was a great town meeting. So appreciated our rep and our senator there. So I just wanted to add my thanks to, to everyone who had a part in, big or little, in putting that together for us this year. That's all I have. Select Board, Gary, Diane, have anything?
I'll just add into the, the town meeting, we should also add in, you know, the set-up crew and the tear-down crew. There's a lot of work behind the scenes that perhaps the citizens didn't actually realize or have a viewpoint on. So it's a lot of work, and I thank you to everybody that made it possible.
Diane, anything?
Muted.
Oh, I guess I don't need to say the same thing, but it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful town meeting. Thank you to everybody.
Great. So we have some cleanup. This agenda is a little, got a little amended since it was originally posted and it's a little shorter, maybe, but it's also a little bit of cleanup. So our consent agenda, which would be the next slide, is kind of a cleanup situation. Not complete, it's not completely clean. Still some work to be done, but this is as far as I could get. So I guess there are several motions here.
Okay, I'll do it once, though. But thank you for taking care of all this as well. I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session minutes for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. And
We're going through these sections?
I think she's gonna do them all.
And move to approve and release the executive session minutes for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, September eighth, twenty twenty-one, as well as move to release the executive session. Yes.
Because I think we need to discuss some of these first.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure who did the, there's some redactions in there. And I've gone through line by line, and I note that for the purpose of the redaction, we're not a hundred percent complete, that there are still names and references in there.
Do you know which ones you saw that in?
Yeah, so it's ten thirteen, ten twenty, eleven three, eleven ten, eleven seventeen, and eleven twenty. I think all the others are good.
Okay, so we're gonna pull those out. We look at those?
Yeah, I think there's more clerical work that may be done on those.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Catherine?
Sure.
Okay, so let's move to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two and March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. And move to approve and release the executive session minutes for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and September eighth, twenty twenty-one. And move to release the executive session minutes for eleven nineteen, two thousand nineteen, and twelve, December second, two thousand nineteen, May nineteenth, twenty twenty, June twenty-third, twenty twenty, and October sixth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Okay, just make a request or a comment before we very, before we take a vote, I just would comment that these are now, I appreciate you catching those things, but now they're almost ready. So let's not, they're from a long time ago. So Gary, if you would, just find them, make the changes and get, keep, keep going with that so that we can get you guys to get those on the next, on the next agenda. Okay, so.
So six seconds minutes. Gary, you think you can review those for next week?
Yes, for the next meeting, yeah, so.
Okay.
Well, I've, I've gone through all of them and taken notes as to what didn't get redacted.
Perfect.
Okay, so it's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Progress is good with Make Heart Wake in progress. Okay, so we can move on. The next agenda item is an A T M debrief, some follow-up items. Tom has mentioned a few of them. I noticed that our moderator is here. He can see if he has any others that we may have forgotten, but I have a couple. Maybe I'll, I'll just kick off with the ones that I have, which everybody, I'm sure, I think most likely Tom is already on. He mentioned the three to five, you know, sending the, the legislation to the, to our local legislators. We have, we, I think we approved a couple of bylaw changes, which will have to go to the Attorney General. And we need to remember, we amended, made a minor amendment to two different documents relative to Harbor Light Community Partners. And five years from now or two years from now, so I'm gonna look at that. And so we need to amend, and that will require select board vote when it's ready, two documents, the Maplewood C P C Grant Agreement and the Affordable Housing Trust Loan Agreement for, for Maplewoods. So there, it's like a, you know, very small detail, but they, the idea of voting on a town meeting was so that those things would end up in the documents. So.
So before you go on, who, who would get us those documents? Is that Margaret or?
Well, Tom will coordinate it, I imagine. Margaret has those documents. And Tom probably does somewhere, but I bet it's easier for Margaret to find them. And she's also very familiar with the amendment that we made at town meeting. So Tom, perhaps you could work with Margaret just to make sure those documents are up to date. I will note that the C P C, maybe both of these have already been amended. So the documents that we're looking for, the most recent ones, are actually called like the amended and agreed upon C P C grant conditions. So just need to make sure we're changing, correcting, updating the correct documents. So that's all, all I had for a follow-up. And I think I said I thought it was a great town meeting. What else? So are there any other things that we should be remembering to remember?
No, I think I saw Michelle was furiously taking down notes over the past three or four weeks to rebuild kind of a lesson learned book or a process book. So I hope that each of the new department heads and people knew the process are also taking down their notes, and we'll get them all together for next time.
Right. As you said, Gary, earlier, there are a lot of details, and usually each someone knows all of the details. And now I think we're back to that point where there's someone who has all of the, a person that has all the information. Roger, did, do you want to, do you have any comment or anything you'd like to just put on the record so that we know and or don't forget?
I'll, I'll just echo what the three of you have said tonight. I think it was a great meeting. Appreciate all the help that we got from all the departments and town staff. Michelle, in particular, did a fantastic job putting together the slides and running them and working, you know, with me on the binders and everything. So I, I think it was just a very well run meeting and a very well-attended meeting, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the next one.
Roger did a great job, not only in running the meeting, I think, but in having everything so very organized with his script and his emotions and everything else that I think that was a big contributor to making a meeting go smoothly. I, I, I think it helped everyone. So thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Catherine, and I certainly, you know, learned some things as well that I plan to, you know, process and, you know, deploy next time. And hopefully next time, you know, we'll be under even more normal circumstances. You know, I know this was a transition getting back into the, the Bueker School, excuse me, the Bueker School, but I'm really hopeful that by the next annual town meeting, we'll be, you know, able to bring back some more of the traditions and things that I know everyone, you know, has been missing the last couple of years. But I think it was good to get this under our belt and reaffirm that we can do this inside in the, you know, notwithstanding the current climate that we're in in terms of public health situation.
Anyone else? Trudy, did you have anything in particular that you wanted to add or?
Not really, but since you brought it up, the certification for these, to petition the legislation, that will be the first one I work on, and I'm hope, I really, my goal is to get that done by the end of the week. And I'll most likely send it to Roger just to give him a, a once-over, just to make sure I didn't miss anything with all the amendments going back and forth. As far as the other two bylaws, I'll work on those after that and get those off to the A G's office. But that's usually, we have thirty days to do that, but I don't like to hold on to it, so I get it done as quickly as possible. But yeah, I think everything went well.
Great. I, I had continued, I don't know, the thirtieth, fifth or for thirtieth that I've been, we still have one sort of A V issue. We did, the A V setup and the sound system was so great this year, and this is not something that we could have changed, but we continue to have a problem. We did make some improvement with the screen that's on the, on the stage. So if anyone's thinking about that next year, I spoke to the A V guy on the way out as we were putting chairs away, and he, he said that, you know, there's a solution, but it's like, it's hugely expensive in terms of projector and using an indoor, enlightened room. But that screen continues to be very hard to see. The monitors were amazing, but for people who couldn't see the monitors. So I don't know, maybe some creative people who work with that kind of thing will, will remember this next year and will come up with a solution. What we had this year was the screen in front of the curtains, which was actually better than using the screen that belongs to that room. But it's still, if we're gonna use that room, which is so bright, it, it remained, and, and we rely on it to, you know, put our motions and other things up, our articles up, just be something to think about. If that's our worst problem, we're okay. Anything else about town meeting? No? Okay. Moving right along. The next thing on our agenda, this is really a conglomeration of things, but it's the last thing on our, a business on our agenda. So last meeting, I think that was last week, we saw revised policies. One was revised, but they were all sort of new to us. And they had been looked at and redlined by council. We had just gotten them. So we agree that we will take them, bring them back this week. They're, they're in the packet. We have them redlined. They're now in our packets also clean, so it's a little bit easier to read through them. But since, again, at least one of these policies has been around for, you know, we've been working on it and editing it and changing it. I just wondered if we could see if we could approve any of the policies that we have listed tonight. So the first one, it's not the first one on the agenda, but it sits up on the screen. This is the Equal Employment Opportunity Policy. Just wondering if anyone has any comments on this one.
Muted, Diane.
Muted?
Diane, you're muted.
Hi again. Is the equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity policy separate from the sexual harassment policy? And they're just on back-to-back pages?
I, I think it is a separate.
It's separate, right? Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't why it's the same page.
I think they're just, they're just probably the way they were copied or printed or whatever, but I would, I believe that this is called, you know, in the same category probably, but a separate policy from the sexual harassment and other forms of unlawful harassment.
I have no issues with this page.
This page looks good.
Okay, so we don't have a motion on the screen, but I think the motion, Gary, you've handled much more complicated ones than this. So if we're ready to vote on this, take a motion.
So is this policy dated? We gonna use today's date?
Yes, and maybe, Michelle, when the meeting's over, you can put a date on the so that we're sure that the motion that we're making to approve as presented today actually appears on the policy.
All right, I move that. Ready?
Yeah.
Can we scroll back up to the?
That way.
All right, so the first one, I move that the select board adopt the title Wyndham Equal Employment Opportunity Policy as of five, April, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So unanimous for equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity policy. So the next one, again, is out of order, but here, probably the one that the most iterations have occurred and is the policy against sexual harassment and other forms of unlawful harassment. Again, this is one. As I mentioned last week, we had some help in writing this, but it also has been reviewed by council. So so we have that information. So comments or questions about this one?
Good here.
I had some questions. Paragraph B, I have to, I didn't bring all my notes, so I'm trying to remember what I will, if we scroll down a little bit to where there's a B. It could be it. Yep. As I read through it, there's no, see, the paragraph B has a subset of a B, but it doesn't have an A anywhere. See what I'm saying on the?
Yes.
Oh, no, no, there's a sexual harassment scrolled back down. In the paragraph B, the second to last line has a sub, has a B, but there's no A.
Oh, I see.
So I didn't, I didn't really understand what happened there.
Well, maybe.
Can we just pull that out?
Wow.
Because harassment becomes unlawful, where enduring the offensive conduct becomes a condition of continued employment, or the conduct is severe or pervasive enough to create a work environment. Yeah, I don't think you need the B. Unless I'm missing.
Just leave it as or?
Yeah, unless you guys are, am I missing something?
No.
Okay. Since we have the author on the line or if there's a simple answer to this, that, you know, if there's like a typo or something that we can identify in this area, Deirdre, if you can tell us, otherwise, we're just going to remove the B unless you have something that's. That's we don't have on the screen.
Uh, thanks Catherine. No, I think the B can come out. I think A, it should be unlawful where A enduring. The offensive conduct is A, but you can just take B out, it's fine.
Okay, so, one edit there, oh. Anything else Diane?
Yep, we can scroll down to paragraph six. Reporting procedure. Yeah, so. I think it doesn't need to have anybody's name so that it's gonna be more useful by contacting the administrator.
No Tom Younger.
No.
I also, I also think the assistant town administrator needs to come out because we don't have one. And I also think that last line. May file a complaint with either the town administrator or a member of the select board who will then report to the town administrator. Right?
Actually, yeah, well, that is the, that's the comment I think that we had, but I would like to talk about whether. We really just wanna leave it file a complaint with, well, I guess we should say the town administrator. Well, if the town administrator is going to get this information ultimately, why wouldn't we just simplify it and file any complaint with the town administrator?
And what if the complaint is with the town administrator then? Then it would come to the select board and then we're in trouble.
But that's where I was wondering, because your comment was who would report, who would report, select board who would report it to the town administrator.
Which doesn't make sense.
No. So, yeah, Deirdre.
Sorry Catherine, can I speak to that a bit?
Sure.
Part of the point, so one is my understanding is um, from talking also to another HR consultant. Is that someone actually should be named, so yes, Tom will change, but that there should actually be a name and a mailing address. In the policy, so you might wanna double check that. With legal counsel. The, the issue with having multiple points. Where people can report in is because if they're not comfortable um, with the central point, there's another option, right? So you don't wanna leave. Only one option, one point of contact in the town. And generally, you typically want to have a woman who's a point of contact as well and not just a single. Male, because someone might not be comfortable coming forward to that one person or to a male in general. So you wanna have some options, but without going to too many people. And if the, if the issue is with the town administrator, you do need somewhere else to go with it.
So I think that for our purposes, um, to have something on the books that's comprehensive. If we make, if we fi- say file a complaint with either the town administrator or a member of the select board, and I guess leave. I think we have to just say contacting the town administrator and I, I guess review it whenever there's a new one to maybe put parentheses name. I, I think that my, my recommendation is that this policy or policies in general, but this policy be um, looked at. In a year or in six months, because I think there's still a little. You know, we don't have it, there are probably some other options with reporting. Considering the staff that we have now, this is probably the best. But if in sometime in the future, we should hire someone who um, is dedicated to HR, maybe um, that person would replace. Someone here, so. If we're okay with what would it changes Diane, so you said contacting parentheses, town administrator. With a name, with an address, right? And then file a complaint with either the town administrator or a member of the select board. Do you want to add, just leave it at that?
Should leave it at that. Right?
Okay.
But uh, because you need, you need, you need two point of contacts. So, yeah, if we should be that point of contact, or maybe we make the finance director who's the second in charge, right? In town hall?
Well, not officially, but.
Not officially.
Could, could be, I, you know, I, I think we have to. I think there's some more discussion relative to that, but I don't think it should hold us up because I think it's gonna, it's going to change. When, when we have a new TA who might have more HR experience, or we may. We've talked a lot about hiring someone part-time, um, just dedicated to HR or as part or another position, so. I think that, that may change a little.
So we can take out assistant town administrator, cause they're.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
That can come out.
We, we don't have one of those and we don't have, at least as far as I know, a plan to have one in the near future.
So then I had little typos on the next one. The um, the second line on that next paragraph, all sexual harassment, any, I think any sexual harassment shall be investigated, and then. Um, at the end. They may also formally notify instead of will. Now, where was that?
Um, I think, I don't think that, I don't think it's optional whether to. I think what this is saying is that the investigation will, will happen. And I don't have a preference with all, it's, you're saying rather than all sexual harassment complaints. Say any sexual harassment complaint?
Any harassment. Complaints, or is it only sexual? I don't know there. And then I thought the investigation may include. I mean, it, I, I don't know what, does it always include a private interview with the person filing a complaint and with witnesses if applicable? Those are just little weird things, but Deirdre probably has better writing than me.
I, I would, sorry, can I?
Go ahead, Deirdre.
I would say pretty much it would, it would always include a private interview with the person filing. And I think all or any doesn't change it substantially.
Okay.
Whichever sounds fine to you.
I was just looking to make sure that wasn't something council added in.
Oh, cause it's different for sexual harassment than other harassment.
Right. But they don't give us a, they don't.
We may consider adding a lot.
They don't really give us any suggestions there, so um. This is basically saying.
So I think the sexual harassment complaints include a private interview, blah, 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 but all harassment complaints are investigated in a manner to maintain confidentiality. To the extent, extent practical but under circumstances.
Okay.
So I think that sexual harassment includes a private interview. Maybe.
So are you saying, take out the word sexual and make it generic to all?
Well, cause it's different, so I think there, where it's highlighted could just be all harassment. And then sexual harassment investigation on the next line will include a private interview. Because they say it's, it's treated differently from other harassments, is that correct?
That's what council says. They don't say how. And from. Adding a line or two discussing the separate complaint processing procedure such as that which I have suggested below.
But I do think if we, if we start with all harassment complaints are investigated in the right manner, and then the next line, sexual harassment complaints. The investigation for sexual harassment complaints will include a private interview, then we're kinda saying. Other harassments are treated a little bit differently. Which is what, I think what they're saying.
I'm, I'm okay with that, again, subject, let's, you know. When we review this, let's make sure we review that part as well. When it's, when it's re-approved. Okay, did you have anything else Diane?
Of course, scroll a little bit, Michelle.
I had one other thing.
To the next page.
I'm remembering myself.
This, the highlighted area. Yeah, I guess we, we were supposed to discuss this anyway. I wasn't really sure.
Well, I think this is what council is suggesting, so this is the pol- it's a poly, policy decision if we want to keep in this paragraph. Oh, that's what he's, that's what they're talking about, just occurred to me now, I've only read this three times. That, that's the, the paragraph regarding complaints that are not sexual harassment. See, it says complaints alleging other than, so I think. I think you could leave, I think that's fine. Right, I was just gonna say, I think that's um. It should probably say, again, town administrator or so, member of the select board. But that's the paragraph they were suggesting be added further up.
Right, I would definitely put it up, and that other, where that other harassment question is, so we understand what that is all about, that makes sense.
Right, so can, can you go up a little bit on this? So right after, yeah.
Yeah, right after.
Right after. Right after, at the end of that paragraph, right?
The end of the one that's investigator may, if necessary, request written statements, I'm pointing to it like.
Right, so that's where the, that's where that other paragraph is meant to be. Gosh, it just occurred to me. Why that was there, so he did give us, oh, I don't know if this is a he, council did give us a suggestion, we just, I just didn't realize, so that would make sense. I think that covers all of it, um, and then we don't really, based on that, we really don't have to change the. The all sexual harassment complaints paragraph, just add the other one, okay.
And then look at number, paragraph numbers, uh, five, six, seven. Something seemed vague to me. As is appropriate under the circumstances, including the release of public. Doesn't really say much as far as those elected officials. In that second paragraph. In the case of allegations made against elected officials of the town, upon the conclusion of the investigation, the town will take such action as is appropriate. Under the circumstances, including the release of public censor. At all we can do.
Public censor is all that, that, the town, right? That the town can do relative to a, an elected official, am I right about that Gary?
Yes, I think so, I think the intent there's, you know, that's the maximum that the board can do. Beyond that, it would have to go to our new recall petition from outside. The town government over to the citizenry.
Right.
Got it, those were all my little things.
Okay. Okay, um, let's see. Yeah, I think I had already. I think that includes everything I had. I think I have a couple of very simple typos, which I can send to Tom, I mean, they're literally like. If you go to the last page of this, of this, um, which is a form. I think it's this one. This one, yeah, it says equal employment opportunity policy and police against sexual harassment. So I haven't found a couple of things like that, so that should be policy, um, so rather than taking time. Literally just typos.
So why are these policies together? And separated from, you know, the reasonable accommodation and the code of conduct, why are they just separated?
I can answer that if you.
Okay, I know they were all on Gary's original list of policies that we needed to have, but go ahead. Deirdre, why are they separate?
So uh, one reason is just that I ended up writing these two in the same document for whatever reason. But uh, prior to that. The, the version of the sexual harassment policy that. Was put forward last fall and then the prior year or two years before, I can't remember. It had had just a one paragraph policy in the sexual harassment policy about equal employment opportunity. And likewise, it had one paragraph at the end that was reasonable accommodation, which that didn't really make sense, so I ended up pulling it out, both of those out. Equal employment and redoing it, and the reasonable accommodation and redoing it, but for whatever reason, I just kept these two in one filed document.
So they could, they could all be separate, or we could put all three or four of these policies on one sign-off sheet.
Right, because eventually they should all have their own section, right, in the, in the overall manual. But I don't know which ones you had planned to have people sign off on. I mean, I think you do need to have people sign off on sexual harassment policy, I'm not sure they need to sign off on the equal employment. So for that purpose, you could probably separate it.
So these are all separate policies.
Yeah.
Which all eventually I hope will be in a policy book that has a date approved, date amended, you know. I don't know, some kind of a table of contents.
And ideally, this is gonna be in a packet, you get hired, or you become elected, and you fill out all your paperwork and all these are in there, right?
Okay, right, right. And doesn't, there is one, I think Gary, you may have looked into this, cause you did so much work with policies. There actually is a personnel policy handbook that is very, almost as old as our master plan. That we don't follow much, is that true?
Yeah, so certainly, I think that if we can get this policy voted on today, and then the uh. The acknowledgement sheet right here is gonna take a little bit more work as far as how are we going to actually implement it. You know, the town clerk hands it to the uh, the newbie, and then uh, signs off, and we're gonna have to have a record keeping on this as well. So I guess we can ask, I'm not sure everyone needs to sign off on the equal employment opportunity policy. But certainly the uh, sexual harassment and when we get to the code of conduct, I think that was the original intent.
Right, okay. Sure.
You also, you do need to have people sign off on the reasonable accommodation when we get to that, because there actually was a law in twenty eighteen. That required notifying people um, of the, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, so that one you'll need to. Disseminate and have people sign that they've received it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
But I didn't do the sign-off sheet, so that's, that, that piece I didn't do.
Okay, so that, that's what you do, once we approve these, then we have to add the sign-off sheets to those that require sign-off sheets. Okay, was there, so that, other than the sign-off sheet, we went through the equal, uh, I mean, the policy against sexual harassment. Is there any more discussion about that? Are we ready to approve that policy?
I think so, is the uh, reporting secretary got all those changes correctly?
All set Gary.
Alright, then if we'll scroll up, I'll make the motion.
Scroll up to where the beginning of equal and uh, policy against.
Well, we already approved the.
Yeah, no, no, this is the policy, it's coming up. This one, right?
I moved that the select board adopt the title when policy against sexual harassment and other forms of unlawful harassment dated five April twenty twenty two.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Okay, so that's um, with, approved a few amendments, but also um, a, a form, a sign-up form. So I think then we have a reasonable accommodation policy. Which I think is pro- yeah, probably next, yeah. Uh, and this is the one I think that I understand as of two thousand eighteen, not only do we need to have it, but we have to have a sign-off on it. I had a couple of, I think on this one, like individual pages, but I don't have those notes right in front of me, so. Again, I'll add my typos if there are any. Um, I'll send them to, to Tom, but it's, Gary or Diane, do you have any comments or questions about this one?
I did not.
No. This is pretty much boilerplate from federal or state law, right?
That's what it looks like, yeah. Um, and the fact that I don't think we had any comments from council on this one must be. Testament to the fact that it's got everything in it that it, it needs to from a statutory point of view. I think I commented someone that, this, this is a policy that I wish that um, my employer, not the town of Wyndham. My employer years ago, um, when I was working the private sector, had, it was before two thousand eighteen, I guess. But it, um, there's some really important stuff in here, so.
Are we ready for the motion? Alright, I moved that the town of Wyndham, the select board adopt the town of Wyndham reasonable accommodation policy dated five April twenty twenty two.
Second.
Okay, so we'll vote, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes.
Look at us, three for three.
I know, I know, this is very great, this, I think we started with policies the beginning of this year. And lastly, this code of conduct, which I think part was your inspiration, actually Diane, uh, and others. There's something, somewhere that is given out to people, but. Um, there's something somewhere that is given out to people, but, um, this is probably a more complete one. Anybody, I, this is also one that, the policy generally states that it's for, you know, hired, appointed and elected officials and council is commenting that, you know, we have a limited ability to enforce it against elected, elected officials. It's my opinion that even though that may be true, I think everyone should be, should at least see this policy and make an effort to whatever we agree with, but make an effort to follow it.
Especially. I would agree with that. Thank you.
Need to set the standard for everybody, so.
Exactly.
Some may have an excuse, but we still need to have a standard there.
Right.
I agree. Well said. So any particular comments on this one?
Can you scroll down to code of conduct, paragraph three, but, um, section B? Be mindful, went too far. Be mindful, the second to last.
Well, I'm getting dizzy now.
Stop there.
Stop.
Stop.
Yeah, be mindful, the second to last of open meeting law and that anything shared in a public meeting becomes a public record. Be mindful. You should just know.
Or why don't we just say comply?
Comply with the open meeting law?
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so comply with the open meeting law.
Perhaps you need to, sorry. Comply with the open meeting law and understand that anything or know that anything. You need one more verb in there.
Yep, either one of those.
Understand or acknowledge would work for me. Understand is fine.
So let's make it comply with the open meeting law and understand that anything shared, da, 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 da. That sound good?
Yeah, sounds great.
Sounds good. Um, and then in, after C, the highlighted area there. Um, never publicly criticize and then why do we have to tell people that?
Well, why do we have to tell them any of this? I, 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 this, this, um, may, may have come, probably came from someone else's, but I, um, I could, I could cite examples where, uh, a chair or a member of an appointed or, uh, committee or uh, an elected official, um, took it upon his or herself to publicly, um, criticize a, a staff member. Um, and, you know, they don't, so it, it has happened and I unfortunately think it should be, um, stated. Now, council has a problem, I guess, saying, with saying never. How about just avoid publicly criticizing an individual employee or a department? Avoid publicly criticizing an individual employee or a department. I think never is a pretty hard word. Avoid, does that sound okay?
Yes. Is that all right with you, Gary?
Yes, I think so. I think the real intent here is to say, yes, you can criticize the action or the process, but not the actual individual. You know, it shouldn't be, I think we're trying to avoid personal attacks here, whereas obviously, you know, if you disagree with the policy or what happened, that's still fair game, but it should not be against the person.
Right, which I think is why it says an individual employee. I don't know that we need necessarily a department, although you know, to, so for someone to, uh, publicly criticize the entire select board, for instance, or the well, that's not appropriate. The entire, I'm trying to think of a department, uh, police force. Um, in a, in a, in appropriate ways, probably not, it's also contemplated in avoid doing that.
So I'm confused on this whole C. I mean, are these all supposed to be bullet points?
Yeah, I think there's probably was a, um, a page break there that.
The refrain.
Went away. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, from a formatting point of view, there's probably some, um, consistency that we could put into these, you know, should they be bullish, should they be letter, should they be numbers? But at this point, that seems kind of minor. But yeah, I think that second should be a bullet before refrain and then no, no space.
And then avoid publicly criticizing any individual employee or department.
Well, I don't, I'm kind of thinking with the, uh, town council that it's kind of hard to restrict a complaint against the department or
Um, well.
First amendment.
Oh, well, I think the cons, yeah.
What about concerns about staff performance should never be made publicly and should be discussed with the town administrator through private conversation, communication. So we just take that whole sentence out. But you can add concerns about staff performance should never be made publicly and only to the town administrator through private communication.
Okay.
That's fair, yes.
Yeah, that's fair.
Because I think that's, you know, as I said, the whole point is no personal attacks, but you still have your you know, freedom of speech. He can criticize all you want, just not make it personal.
Not public either, geez.
Yeah, okay.
And then the only other question I had is in section four, where we throw it on the town clerk. I guess because we don't have HR. I mean, this kind of, this should all go with anyone who's appointed or hired or elected. When they come in, they fill out all their paperwork and they sign it and then it goes into everybody's files. So we usually do that with our treasurer collector or assistant treasurer collector in Wyndham, right?
Well, not if, if they're hires, but if there are people who are appointed or elected, they go through the town clerk to be sworn in. So it's almost like there are two places right now.
Hmm, I'm just imagining, you know, the amount of stuff that the clerk's office does with the conflict of interest, which is similar. The open meeting law, making sure everyone takes their oath, and then we add on it to collect all these policies. But I guess if we don't have a HR, that's where it really would go, right?
I think our original last year, you know, thoughts were that, uh, decentralize this and knowing that, you know, had to get the swearing in, I think it drifted towards the town clerk at that point, but perhaps we can just go with town clerk now and see if, uh, we mature to an HR system in a bit here. Don't know.
I think once the, there's actually a book or two that have all of these together that are copied and have copies of, and I, if, I'm, I'm open to suggestions from the town clerk or town clerks. But maybe once it's all together and it's just a matter of handing it to someone, um, it would require that the, uh, assistant, the person who does HR in finance, um, to refer that person to the town clerk to get a copy of it. If we want to centralize it, either some, the appointed people have to go to the treasurer, assistant treasurer, or everybody else has to go to the town clerk. Um, but it's, it's not a, I don't think it's a heavy lift, provided we provide whoever's handing this out with all of the information that they need in a packet or packets and just make them available. So it's just
And then on one page, they sign off on everything on one page and then it's just one more page, but it is it is a spreadsheet for the, uh, the town clerk. And it should go in their, their personnel files, though. So the reasonable accommodation and all that stuff should go in their personnel files. If they're hired, right?
Yes.
So do you think that we could leave this to the town clerk and the person in finance who does the HR to uh, decide who, how they want to coordinate it? And our, our policy decision is basically everyone who's hired, appointed or uh, elected needs this informa, you know, most of this information and the employees need certain parts of it and let Tom work with those folks to figure out how to do it.
Yes, I just wanted to throw it out there too, that I didn't want to, I didn't want us to throw everything on one department at this point, so they can chat about it. I see Tom has his hand out.
Oh, sorry, Tom. Nice yellow hand. Sorry, Tom. Go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
Okay, in a perfect world, uh, what you should have is a system set up where the personnel files are totally centralized, where you have the personnel files and also separate from any personnel files that involve medical records. And so eventually, if we do set up an HR position here, even if it's part time, we should have an office space or an area that has, as Diane's talking about, the centralized files and having them versus each department. Each department should not have their own personnel files on individuals. They should all be centralized.
Right. Okay. So. Anything else about this?
So we're going to roll this one to the next meeting and do a little bit more work or?
I think the only work that's left to done, left to done, oh my gosh, left to be done is how to hand it out.
Right.
And we can throw that over to our departments, right? The finance and, uh, they could figure something out.
Right, but I think the content seemed like we were okay with.
Yeah.
And they're going to be continuing implementation, fine tuning. I think that's going to go on for, with all of these policies. So I'm okay with approving it, um.
So can we scroll down just a little bit more?
That there's again a funny space there between the title enforcement and, uh, what the enforcement actually is. Did we, wasn't there a paragraph there?
Yeah, there it is. So each board committee may vote to censure any elected member. So actually, we're saying that select board has to censure over all appointed people and then for those few elected boards, it would be the board themselves that could censure. Is that correct?
That's what I think this says. And, you know, I don't, there have been times, depending on the, well, I guess this is a code of conduct. We don't, we don't contemplate, and I guess we shouldn't, I don't know. We don't contemplate. Uh, we, we say the appointing authority may decline to reappoint an individual who violates any provision. Well, yeah, I mean, it's basically the, you know, appointing authorities' autonomous decision whether or not to reappoint someone. Um, there has been at least one situation in my memory that were, were someone because of a code of conduct, conflict of interest slash problem was actually removed from as an appointed individual. I don't know if we want to be that draconian. Otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with this. You know, don't reelect them, don't reappoint them kind of thing.
Are we putting in that second part just as a deterrence? Because otherwise, I think the, the main intent here is to lay out who has the authority. You know, select board overall appointees and elected boards control themselves.
So it should really say each elected board or committee may vote to censure any elected member and the appointing authority, which is usually the select board, but could also probably be the.
A combination, you know, the exception.
Yeah.
Fincom.
Right.
So just leave it to appointing authority, yes.
Yeah, I think so. It's again, it's not really, uh, it's a hard one to have a, to enforce other than to point out to whoever's breaking it, that they're they're not following the policy.
All right, so we're inserting then each add elected board committee may vote to censure any elected member and the appointing authority may censure as well or?
Well, yes, we, you know, yeah, would may censure or decline to reappoint.
Right.
I think probably the difference in this kind of a decline to reappoint is when a reappointment came up rather than just not appointing that person. It might be noted that this person will not be reappointed due to a documented code of conduct, the violation. We don't have to say that. I'm just, that's my, so.
So let's put in, so it's just put in elected after each.
Each elected, yeah.
And then after, uh, appointing authority may put in the word may censure or decline. So add the word censure or.
Yep.
Got that Catherine Tinsley? Yes, of course she does.
Yes, of course she does.
All right, are we ready then?
Yep.
I move that the, uh, select board adopt the kind of Wyndham code of conduct policy dated five April twenty twenty two.
Second.
Okay, for a vote, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So unanimous to with that. So thank you to the board for getting us through. Thank all of us for getting us through a lot of actually, there were other policies that were adopted, um, earlier in the year. So we're actually making some real progress on this and um, certainly thanks to, um, Deirdre who sort of got it, sort of volunteered to help initially and then the person who was doing the leading wasn't available any longer. Um, so thank you, Deirdre, for not dropping that, but following it through, um, to completion. Okay.
What is the plan with all these policies? Where are they all held?
All in a, uh, select board policy handbook, which will be online and hard copy in the, uh, Michelle's office.
Okay, I want to see if they were going to be online. That would be good. Okay, thank you.
So is it a select board handbook or is it a?
Well.
Town of Wyndham handbook.
A town of Wyndham handbook, policy handbook, yeah. Because I noticed there, there are a couple of different kinds of policies that we've lumped together and they're not all selecting. Okay, so, um, we got through a lot of that and if we'll scroll to the next slide, it will be the famous any or all other, I think.
Really? Wow.
I know. Any other matters? I do not have any other matters. I would only add relative to upcoming meeting dates that, um, you know, we've talked about the election, but April nineteenth is up to you guys, but I would add just for the select boards, reminder that we do have executive sessions tomorrow, Wednesday at one and Thursday at
Nine?
Nine, nine. Um, so that's, that's.
Okay.
So if I may add one more thing. So this is Catherine, your last, uh, regular select board meeting. And perhaps the, uh, public audience would like to hear what was the high point of your, uh, select board career here?
You know. It's so hard to pick just one. Um, I, I think I think, uh, from the town's point of view, this is going to sound a little strange, but all the work and the celebration that went around the three hundred seventy fifth anniversary, what happened during my, uh, while I was a select board member, that was, I think, a high point for the town. I think just in general, I, I have really, it's been an honor for me to, um, serve with not only elected and appointed officials, but also the staff, um, that's been, you know, just so amazing and resilient and continues to be resilient. So I, I don't think I can pick one thing. I just feel like the town has, um, you know, moved forward over these seven or so years. There's been a lot of difficult situations, but people have just marched on and I, I find that to be pretty amazing and I think it was, like I said, an honor to be a part of it, so. That's the best I can do for the best. Thank you.
Great question, Gary.
I know, gosh, you didn't even give me a tip on that one. So many things in seven years. How the heck can I remember them all? Um, but yeah, lots of good stuff that has gone. Okay, um, given that, I think that we have
Ready?
I get to hear this motion one, well, not really one last. one, I get to hear this motion one, well, not really one last time, one, one regular meeting time.
I'd like to make a motion to, or move that we adjourn at gosh, I don't know what time it is.
Seven forty PM.
Seven forty PM.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Uh, we'll adjourn at seven forty PM.
Thank you, Catherine.
We'll see many of you soon.